Okay, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wannakee Village Trustee Candidate Forum. The Chamber and the Tribune are pleased to be hosting this once again this year. And we want to thank you for running for office and participating in our democracy. Unfortunately, Sam is not able to join us tonight. But once again, we appreciate all of the time that you're taking to be here with us. And just as an FYI, we had planned on doing a separate Village Trustee forum, which would have been prior to this tonight. But that was canceled because Mary Heimbecker was unable to be a part of that. So we did cancel that in case anybody asked or in case you were wondering. So there is no audience, obviously, tonight, but we are recording it and so that it will be able to be viewed. I will be sending you all the link tomorrow. For sure, by the end of the day, if it can be earlier, I will do that. But in the middle of the day, I'm getting my COVID shot, so I won't be all day in the office. So that's why I'm saying by the end of the day, I hope that I will be able to share that recording. And then the Chamber will post it on Facebook, on our YouTube channel and our website. And the Wannakee Tribune will post it on their website and their Facebook page. At this time, I will turn it over to Roberta, who will be the moderator for the candidate forum. And we'll take it from there, Roberta.
Okay, yes, thank you all for participating and yes, thank you all for running for office. I'm just going to go over some rules and tell you a little bit about how tonight's going to go. We have, everyone will get one opening statement. You'll have two minutes. That will be followed by five questions. And then there will be one final question. And that will be one that you can ask all of the other candidates. And we would also like you to answer the same question. That answer will be one minute.
And then as far as I did, I did want to mention that I should have mentioned earlier was I will be the timer. And when you have 30 seconds left, I will just simply go like this, okay? 30 seconds to wrap it up. And when your time is up for answering, there'll be a little twinkle that makes the sound. So we just ask that you respect that and, you know, finish talking at that time so that the next person can go.
Thank you. Yeah. And we would also ask that you mute yourself while the other folks are talking. Just for etiquette. And am I leaving anything out, Ellen? I think we're good to go.
I think you covered it all, Roberta. So yeah, we can start with the first opening statement.
Okay, so I'm going to do kind of a round robin as I answer the question. So I'm going to ask Phil to do the first opening statement for two minutes.
And also just to clarify that I will start the timing when Phil starts answering the question. Just to be clear.
Hi, Phil.
Hi there. What question?
Well, this is your opening statement.
Oh, my goodness.
So tell us about yourself and why you're running and stuff like that.
Well, I've been in Wannakee since 1975. Have had a business in Wannakee, still have a business in Wannakee. Have been semi-active all the time I've been in Wannakee and touched a lot of lives. I think all most always favorably. I've served on a lot of committees, worked with a lot of service clubs. Done my share of almost anything, from cleaning the creek to raking lawns in the parks, et cetera, and planting trees in the conservancy. I like to think I'm fairly progressive. I realize that some people might look around and think, well, age should come into the issue at this election. But I don't think we should make any big deal about the relative use of my opponents. So the fact that I'm the oldest person here, I don't think that's a detriment or an advantage. I'm still fairly progressive. I like to think forward. I like to plan to move Wannakee ahead. I know by being on the board for a long time, I've been involved in a few controversial issues. I've had occasion where in committee I would vote for something. And when it got to the village board, I would vote against it because, quite honestly, I would vote on it in committee so I could get it to the village board for further discussion. So that aside, I'm going to still, if I'm elected, be active. And if I'm not elected, be active. Thank you very much.
Okay, Joe, let's have you give your opening statement. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running.
Well, I've been living in Wannakee now since 2005. Was on the board, of course, from 2018 to 2020. Beyond that, you know, I know there's a whole lot of different issues going on in the village right now. There's concerns with blasting, there's concerns about TIF, there's the whole diversity issue. There's a lot of discussion about the affordable or workforce housing. You know, regardless of what those issues are and, you know, they absolutely will change over time. I think I'm somebody who can take a look at them and have a broad perspective. Somebody who's not going to make up their mind ahead of time. You know, I'm willing to hear all the sides and then come to a conclusion. On a slightly different note, there's been a lot of discussion around imperfections in the current board and some of their actions, the closed session that was that was broadcast. I just want to say that none of us are perfect. I think we can all agree on that. It's important that we learn from our mistakes. I think the current board has. And, you know, with that, I guess I hope the people will elect me.
Okay, let's go to Robert, opening statement. Please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running.
Hello to our listeners. I'm Robert McPherson. I've lived in Wannakee since 2013. I'm running for the third time. I will admit that. I don't think it's a secret at this point. And I'm running, you know, as I continue to run on a platform of, you know, progressivism for the village. You know, you may hear other candidates talk about progressivism, but I actually live it. I have been endorsed by the Dane Dems. I have been endorsed by South Central AFL-CIO. Sorry, the Labor Union AFL-CIO. I am endorsed by the current president and vice president of the Wannakee Community School District. This is because I actually live and breathe these ideals that we can move Wannakee forward. I have served on the Wannakee Housing Task Force. I have represented citizen concerns to the village board. Some of our current incumbents have heard me speak more than once. Sometimes not in their favor, sometimes in their favor. I believe that, you know, as citizens of the village, you have a right to be heard, no matter who you know, what property you own, or where you're from. The village, like it or not, is having some issues with matters of diversity, equity and inclusion. And because of that, it's exposed that it might be hard if you are not a certain type of person to be represented at your village board. I represent those people. I'm willing to listen to those communities. And we really need to take those communities seriously because they are the future of Wannakee. I know that there are people who've lived here for three generations. They deserve just as much representation as somebody who's lived here for a couple of months. And we really need to look out for those citizens and we need to make sure that they get the representation. And I bring that fresh voice to the board. Thank you.
Angie, please tell us about yourself and why you're running for village board.
Thank you very much, Roberta and Ellen, for having us here. I appreciate the opportunity and I want to say to the people who are going to listen to this recording, my name is Angie Ramos and I moved to Wannakee about eight years ago. I was born in Columbia. I'm a mom, I'm a woman, not only a mom, but I'm a working mom. I work for the Wannakee Community School District as a translator and interpreter. I speak Spanish. I'm a professional interpreter and translator. I also serve on the board for the Wannakee Neighborhood Connection, which is one of our nonprofits here in town that serves community, part of the community that needs some assistance with social services. And I'm also their translations coordinator. It hasn't been that long, but I like to get things done. So we started with one person being a bilingual volunteer. And now we have a group of about eight bilingual volunteers and we always have an interpreter on call. So that's been a great improvement for the neighborhood connection. I also work at the Madison College where I do teach future healthcare interpreters and then some classes for interpreters who want to advance their careers. So I'm a part-time faculty there. And the reason why I'm running is because I want to bring a new and different perspective to the village and help make Wannakee even better than it already is for our children and for everybody who lives here. I want everyone to feel welcome, to feel like they have a voice at the board, that they're represented. I'm easy to get a hold of. People call me, email me, stop by my house and we can have conversations and get things done. And para las personas que hablan español, les cuento que yo soy Angie Ramos. Vengo de Colombia, soy una mamá de Wannakee que se vino aquí hace ocho años. Y quiero traer una voz nueva de representación a nuestra junta de Wannakee para que todas las personas se sientan identificadas, que se sientan bienvenidas en Wannakee. Yo estoy en la tienda de Wannakee Neighborhood Connection, ya me conocen de ahí. También estoy en Madison College enseñando y he hecho cosas para mejorar el servicio a las personas de habla hispana. Que es lo que quiero hacer también para las personas en la junta de Wannakee. Espero que todos los que puedan votar, voten por mí o me apoyen corriendo la voz con unas demás personas. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
And Gary, let's hear from you now. Tell us about yourself and why you're running for another firm.
You, Gary, you're on mute.
There we go. Yeah, I'm Gary Herzberg, running for village board. Been on the village board around 20 years. Served on, I think, almost all the committees except for EMS and fire police in the village. Have a lot of experience dealing within the organization. I think that's a big benefit. As it takes a while when you get on the village board to learn how to maneuver and help out the different departments, understand what their budgets are and how they do their work. So I'm always concerned about the taxes that people are paying in the community. We always know that our taxes are too high. We have to do everything we can to do to control those taxes while still really giving a high level of essential services to our community. We've got a lot going on in Wannakee, as you know, some of the other candidates have said. Housing diversity, business park expansion. We have a lot of things to look at. I think I've always probably hopefully led by example. I think I have pretty strong leadership qualities. And I like to get things done in the community. Probably to me, the best community in Dane County to raise a family. We want to keep that and continue. You know, Wannakee is a very safe, safe place for our families to, you know, raise their kids and grow up and enjoy the community. So that's it.
Well, you all kind of switched around on your Hollywood squares there. I had Joe under Phil, so I'm going to ask Joe the first question, even though Robert, you moved up under Phil. And the first question is, so I'm wondering if you feel that Wannakee is a successful community now? And if so, why? And if not, why not? So Joe, that goes to you.
Oh, absolutely. Wannakee is a successful community. We're diverse, right?
Phil, I'm sorry. I was asking the question of Joe first. Yeah, so I wanted to not pick on the same person first.
Oh, Joe.
So what, is Joe still here?
I am. I'm still here. That just kind of threw me off. So, yeah, I would say Wannakee is a successful community. I think you'd have a hard time finding people that would argue with that. At the same time, it certainly has its share of issues. You know, diversity is obviously front and center currently. And I think we need to continue to look into that. We need to continue with the training, the different efforts, inclusion efforts that are going on. We need to be looking at, and something that I don't think has been done a whole lot so far, looking into our ordinances and seeing if there is systemic racism that's built into those. And I am confident that there are in at least some cases. So, yes, I think it's a great community. I think it's a great community to raise kids in. I think it's a great community to have a family. I think it's a great community to start a business. But I think, you know, there's just things that a person always needs to be aware of and be cautious of. And there's always room for improvement.
Okay, and then, let's see. And then, Robert, you would be the next person to answer that question. And the question again is, do you feel that Wannakee is a successful community? And if so, why? And if not, why not?
So I'm going to say it really depends on how you define success. There are many measures in which Wannakee is obviously a successful community. We have, we have, you know, we have high property values. We have, you know, low crime. We have a school district that is the jewel of our community. There are many ways that you could say Wannakee is a success. If you are not somebody who's sharing in that success, you may feel that Wannakee was not as successful. If you are concerned about walking around because of the color of your skin, you would think that Wannakee is not as successful. If you are a state, you know, working parent and, you know, single parent and you're struggling to afford rent within Wannakee, you may not feel Wannakee is successful, even though you are sacrificing everything so that your child can go into that school district and have a good future. There's a lot of measures of success. I don't think that it's fair to say that we are completely successful as a community until, you know, almost everybody in the community is sharing in that success because they want to share in that success. I mean, we all do want to share in that success, but they don't always have the opportunity to share in that success. And we are leaving those folks behind as we continue to see, you know, the increase in housing prices, the increase in taxes and the lack of, quite frankly, jobs that match up with how much it costs to live within Wannakee. So we have to address those issues. We have to look at transportation. Transportation in Wannakee is not a success. We are still car-dependent. We are still one of the only communities that's not connected with the bus system, pretty much in the Madison area. And we can do better. You know, we haven't really looked at that for years. The county keeps reaching out to us to talk about transportation and we don't want to answer it because it costs money. It does cost money. So, you know, again, do I think Wannakee is successful? In some ways, yes, but in other ways, not as much.
All right, Angie, we're to you now. Do you think Wannakee is successful? And if so, why? And if not, why not?
Thank you. I feel like Wannakee is successful in many ways, just like Robert was saying. We have a lot of things that are going well in our community. We have our school district that's, when I get asked why I say Wannakee, I always say, you know, this is a community where I feel welcome, where I feel that we have neighbors, that we know them, that we have kids that can go to a great school district. So I have a lot of great things to say about Wannakee. And then there are other things that I know we can do better. Just same as Robert was saying, for example, I'm currently renting. I rent a duplex and we live here comfortably. The rent isn't too high because we've been here for years. But when we look at buying a house, then the first thing that comes to my husband's mind is, let's move out of Wannakee because we can find some great properties nearby that are at a great price when we compare it to Wannakee. So I know a lot of people are in that same boat. And I've seen people who are renting too, that they move out of Wannakee because they cannot afford a house here. Or they can afford the house, but not the taxes, so same thing. Or if they are looking for a place to live, they go from an apartment. Oh, and then have to move out of here if they want to move to rent a house. Because the house rents are, there's two, there's not that many and they're expensive. And then the other thing is the requirements that they have. Sometimes they, I've brought this up before, like they require social security numbers when someone's wanting to rent, so that is a barrier for immigrants. There's a language barrier. And of course, along with that, there's definitely work to be done on diversity, equity and inclusion. Thank you.
Okay, Gary, you're up now. The question again is, do you feel that Wannakee is a successful community? And if so, why? And if not, why not?
Gary, you're on mute.
There we go. Yeah, I feel that Wannakee is a very successful community. Great schools, very safe to raise our families. The village boards accomplished a lot over the last 10 or 15 years. You know, we built a new village center and a senior center. We modeled the police station, the fire station, the EMS. We've built an award-winning library, revitalized an aging downtown into a destination for the community. We've tripled our budgets to keep our streets maintained. We have great parks and shelters, along with fabulous programs for our friends. But the real things to me that make Wannakee a great community, I mean, you can go back to the Legion guys, the Legion guys who started the Village, the Legion picnic that turned into Wannafest. Our friend here, Phil, on the call, Ian Neal and probably Ken Ballwig, wanted an Oktoberfest celebration years ago when they started Woktoberfest. Chris Zellner thought families should have a way to get together on the Fourth of July and not have to leave Wannakee. And he started Wannabooms. Phil, again, wanted some Christmas lights, so he got the Rotarians and they started the holiday light event. Chris Zellner went out and said, you know what, we got to get people downtown because we revitalized downtown. And so he started the holiday, or he started the holiday lights, Light the Night event, to show off not only the downtown, but also the rotary lights. We have other people in the community that, hockey parents, they got together and now we have the ice pond. You know, parents got together and did Warrior Stadium. Now the soccer folks have gotten together and with the schools and partnered, and they have a new turf field. So all these events and projects that bring our community together, the hundreds of volunteers and service clubs that work together to raise the money. And then they turn around and reinvest it back into our community, to our youth sports teams, the Wannakee Neighborhood Connection, the Wannakee Food Pantry and scholarships for kids. The strength of Wannakee is in our community spirit and working together to accomplish great things.
Last but not least, Phil, sorry, but we want to hear from you too, of course. So please tell us, do you think that Wannakee is a successful community? And if so, why? And if not, why not?
Okay, of course, we're a great, successful community. I could start with our financial position. Our tax rate is in the lower third of Dane County. Our village debt is the envy of the state. I think our balance right now is around $36 million. We could owe, if we wanted to, 107. The previous village boards and the current one have set a limit of half that. So we have our self-imposed limit of $53 million. We're well under that and our new library is in there. So I'd like to keep working towards quality of life. And with that room that we have, perhaps pursue referendum so we can have a nice pool complex where we can host events, have a place where kids can go for a splash park. You know, just one more thing that we could add to it. We have a fantastic park systems. Years ago, when we started the Neighborhood Connection downtown in a vacant storefront, it was really neat and it got a little bigger over the years and moved into this and that. A few years ago, my friend Gary and I and about six others spent about six months in there tearing apart that old building and putting in new walls, ceilings, floors, painting, electrical, you name it. We put in two floors and now we have a place for people that need a little bit of help to go get it. Forty years ago, when I and Pat O'Malley started the Chamber of Commerce, we were very interested in new people. So we started our own high neighbor type program. And so we've been reaching out to the Chamber of Commerce to new people that came into Wannakee all the time. So we, from day one, we tried to include new people in what Wannakee's success has to offer. Thank you.
So the next question, I think, goes to Joe. Joe started off underneath Phil on my screen anyway. So Joe, this question is for you.
No, I started last time.
You did? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Then it would go to Robert. Robert, you start. I got very confused when the order of you folks switched on the screen, so, okay. And this is a big hypothetical question, but we kind of hope that this relays kind of where your priorities lie. So if you received a $10 million grant to spend on the village in any way that you wanted, how would you use it and why?
A great hypothetical question. I think anybody would love to have $10 million to spend in a municipality. I think that there would be three very clear places that I would take that money. First off, we would start with making sure that our infrastructure is properly funded. We have a lot of streets within the village. We're building more streets. We're building streets in areas that are funded through tax incremental financing districts that are not currently paying money back into the, to the general fund for their maintenance of those streets. So I would make sure that we've, for one, have built a good base so that we could afford to pay for the streets that we already have within the village. I would then turn towards affordable housing. And what I mean when I say by affordable housing is not that we would just start handing out money hand over fist if you may want to build affordable housing. We would expect them to go through the same process where they work with WIDA, they work with Federal Homeland Bank. They show that they have a qualified project. We'll let other people do the heavy lifting. We're a small village. We don't, we're not experts in building affordable housing. But those outside agencies, they are. And we would rely on their guidance and we would put funds available for them to match into those funds using part of that grant to make sure that we are building affordable housing based off of good projects that come into the village. The third thing that I would do with that is kind of like infrastructure, but it goes back to transportation. I always hear that one of the biggest barriers to getting bus service on Wannakee is the cost. Well, if I had a $10 million grant, I'm taking part of that money and I'm looking at how we can get a rapid transit bus that comes out to Wannakee. We have employees that come into Wannakee from Madison, again, because they can't afford to live here. And we have people who live in Wannakee that probably wouldn't want to ride their, ride in their car if they didn't have to and sit in rush hour traffic and would take a rapid transit bus right into Middleton or Madison, or heck, even Sun Prairie. I know we don't like Sun Prairie, but they could get a bus service too. So, you know, those would be my big three priorities that I would use that $10 million on.
I believe we're up to Angie now. So the question again, if you received a $10 million grant to spend on the village in any way you wanted, how would you use it and why? how would you use it and why?
Ten million, wow, hard to think about that. But if I would get ten million dollars to spend in the village, I would definitely prioritize bridging the gap of the housing, affordable housing. So having um affordable housing so people can work here and live here. Um, not have to go outside of Wanake because they cannot afford to live in Wanake but still have to commute here. So I think that would be one of my biggest priorities, um, just like Robert mentioned. And then the second thing that I believe we definitely need to get ahead because we are working on it, but our pace is very slow. It's on the diversity, equity and inclusion. And with that, I want to say Wanake is growing. And it's becoming more diverse with time. We are getting uh more people from other countries. Um, we're getting more people who don't speak English here. We're getting more people who um move here just for several reasons, but we are becoming more diverse. And it seems like we still have some rejection on some people uh towards this new um community that we have. So why is that? So there's a lot of roots to it and we need to get deep into that and that takes work and that just taking a you know, just a quick Zoom or meeting. It it takes deep, deep work and that's gonna take time and money. So I would definitely invest in that because I want everyone to feel welcome here.
So now we're up to Gary. Um, the question again is, if you received a ten million dollar grant and you could spend it on the village in any way, what would you use it for?
Well, I think, you know, the, the discussion about workforce housing is, you know, kind of front and mind for everyone. But it's a difficult way. How do you figure out how you get there? There are a number of different programs that are, you know, communities are using throughout the state. Some of those programs, you know, maybe assist seniors, you know, it's, it's, it's always been a terrible thing in my mind and it's our, it's our tax system, our property tax system that you know, seniors live their whole life in their home. And after retirement, they can hardly afford to stay in them because of the property taxes. And that's, that's something that's not really a local issue, but if there was a way to somehow assist seniors, allow them to stay in their homes, that would be a great thing. Transportation is another issue that, you know, to Robert's point. Dean County's been here numerous times in front of the board, you know, trying to look at bus service, but the, the issue always ends up being, well, do you go to the east side or do you go to the west side? We're kind of stuck in the middle. Nobody could ever come. With a kind of a concise solution to that problem, but if we had a grant that large, we'd probably be able to solve it. EMS and fire, people need to understand our community, as we grow, uh, those services need to grow with us. And it's getting more difficult to uh to find volunteers to support, you know, the size of our community. So that's gonna have a budget impact on us in the future. So that's something we have to think about and how we fund that going forward without impacting our taxes a lot. So, thanks.
And then we're up to Phil. How, if you had a ten million dollar grant to spend on the village, how would you spend it?
I think uh most of it would I'd use for a revolving loan program. It'd be a nice way to be able to help people with their down payment that they could pay back uh at a measured pace. Either with a very low interest or no interest. But if this revolving uh program was uh worked correctly, we could help people get their down payment into the homes. Uh, they could get that housing they need so badly. And if they pay it back, we could help the next person down the line on it. And the second thing I would do is, I would, I think I would start a language night school. When, when my uh folks came here as immigrants years ago, the first thing they did was go to night school and learn English so they could compete and they would have that good, strong language base. So I think that if we had a language night school here, we could have a, a place where we could help some of these folks so they could learn English and compete a little bit more. I noticed in our business out at Culvers, uh, we seem to have our own little school, so it seems to work for us. I think it would work for almost any place. Thank you.
Okay, and Joe, last but not least, right?
You bet. So my, my initial thought was ten million dollars. That's great. And then my second thought on that was, you know, when you're talking about, you know, a village the size of Wanake, ten million is a nice chunk, but it's not that much, you know, I mean, there's, there's limitations there. So there's really three things that, that came to mind for me. Uh, first one would, and I, and I'm confident we could not do all three of them. We could maybe do parts of all three of them. Um, first one would be um assisting with the workforce housing concept. I'm, I'm not overly thrilled with the, with the TIF solutions that we've got so far. I mean, I, I think it's probably one of the better things that we've got there, but I'm, I'm still looking for something better, so I think this would come into play and be able to assist a lot with that. Um, second thing, something that Robert really touched on, and that's our infrastructure and our streets. Um, I've driven down a couple of them particularly uh over by the library and and there are some that are horrendous right now. And, and granted, they're probably on the list to be replaced, but we need to be a little bit quicker in doing that. And, you know, if we've got the extra money, that would be a great way to do that. The third thing, um, you know, the first two are kind of necessary things. The third one, you know, a lot of Wanake neighborhoods have already got their own little neighborhood pools. And I think that's something that's gonna make it very difficult to ultimately come to a conclusion that we need a village pool. But if we've got this sort of money uh sitting around, that makes a real nice jumpstart into making that happen. So, that's it.
All right, I think I'm starting with Gary now. Angie, did you start the last round of questions, the last question?
It should be Angie.
No, I'm next.
You're next.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and this question, I don't know, it seems like maybe some of you have answered it, but maybe this will narrow it down to one thing, and that is if you could change one thing about the village, what would it be and why?
I think I would make our village more inclusive. That would be my main thing because I think along with that would come the housing. Because if we have more affordable housing, we would be more inclusive. We would um have more diversity. So I think um, that's what I would change. And um have us not be known as a white village, like white Aki that I've heard. That's just not who I want Wanake to be. I want Wanake to be a place where we're inclusive. And inclusive would mean, um, instead of, you know, thinking of, oh, let's, so people have problems coming up with a down payment. Or people um have problems speaking English instead of coming up with a a solution where they have to be the ones to get it fixed. Then we, as a village, remove the barrier. So instead of saying, um, okay, so now we're gonna have everybody who doesn't speak English, uh, speak English. Um, instead, we're gonna say, okay, there's some people who don't speak English, then what can we do about removing that barrier? Because we need to think about the barriers themselves and not about the person who has the barriers. Because maybe it's not as easy as going to English school. So that would be the one thing I would change is, um, change our, our mindset to be more inclusive throughout the whole village. Thank you.
Um, Gary, I think you're up now.
Yeah, could you repeat that question one more time?
If you could change one thing about the village, what would it be?
Um, you know, we, we rely today pretty heavily upon our real estate, not our commercial real estate, but our homes to, as a, as a tax base. I wish Wanake was in a position, I, I sometimes look at, you know, the deforests, the sun prairies, and they're located on the interstate and it's very not simple, but it's easier for them to draw businesses um to their communities based on their uh transportation corridor that they're on. I think it would really help Wanake if we could expand our business base. Uh, we wouldn't have to be so reliant upon our residential tax base, and I think we would grow as a community.
And Phil, now the question is to you. Um, if you could change one thing about Wanake, what would it be?
I would change the perception that Wanake is not a welcoming community. Uh, I think we are a welcoming community. Uh, uh, the, this perception that came up would, I think last year I started hearing this word, why the key, and I, I just don't understand it. I didn't know about some of these problems until people started chanting about it, because what I knew was, I met people, I talked to them, I worked with them and we got along. Then all of a sudden I say, well, I started hearing, well, we're not receptive. I want to change, however that is, wherever it's coming from. We gotta get that out there and then we've have to talk to the people that are getting the perception. And if, if that's the person that works uh part-time at Endris or at Culvers or uh the person that's looking for a job, uh, I have a neighbor across the yard that's a unemployed electrician. Uh, and so I've sent him to a couple of places to look for work. And he just moved into town. It's amazing. I, I, I thought, here's a guy that moved into Wanake and doesn't have a job. And he hasn't got the perception that we're not welcoming because the first thing I did was say hi to him. And uh, he's not a guy that looks like me. I don't look like him, but his, his kids don't look like me, but we're having a good time and we're good neighbors. So I want everybody to be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Robert, we're on to you. Um, the question again is, if there was one thing you could change about Wanake, what would it be?
To be fair, I think Joe is actually next because I was first last time.
Oh, sorry. I'm not gonna get it.
Sorry, Joe.
No worries, as long as we know what the order is, you know, we'll get there.
I'm glad you do.
So um, if, if I could change one thing, what would I change? I would get people to walk their dogs on a leash. I'm kidding, no. No, one, one of the things that I would change, I think that sort of leads into it, um, is actually a diversity of ideas. And, you know, it's, it's one thing to have diversity of cultures and diversity, you know, across all sorts of things, but one thing that I, we seem to lack, or at least uh my experience is that, you know, we don't always share differing ideas, differing viewpoints on things. We, we all seem to kind of come together and you know, clump on to, to one thing and then that's what we run with. Um, so I think we would, we would do well to, you know, throw out some different things that you know, maybe it sounds crazy. Well, that's great because, you know, it starts the thought process. Um, and I'd like to see that in the village board. I'd like to see that uh on the school board. I'd like to see it, you know, across our entire village. I think that would be a good thing.
Now are we up to you, Robert?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, so it, you know, if I could change one thing, and, and I'm, I'm gonna sound like I'm stealing a little bit from Angie, but I, you know, I agree. It, it does come back to, it does come back to diversity, equity and inclusion, but it, to an extent, there's so many problems that, that, that tie into that, that, that changing that mindset would really change, you know, change these problems that we have in the village that are related to it. I mean, if you have affordable housing, you know, Gary's talking about having, attracting more of a commercial base to the village. Well, the last time the village did a study, uh, he's right, it being too far away from the interstate is a problem. But then the second highest thing stated was that it's too costly to live in Wanake to attract an employee base. So we really have a mismatch. We export more jobs than we import because we, we send people out of the village to work. Uh, and that, that helped, that makes our tax base suffer. Uh, you know, we're talking about uh being friends with our neighbors. Uh, it's really hard in some of these neighborhoods to be friends with your neighbors. Some of these neighborhoods are set up in a way that uh, they're already have uh groups set up within them that if you're not a part of that group, you're not gonna feel comfortable going in there. I mean, I've worked in banking, in banking with diversity, equity and inclusion. There's a, there's a lot of research that says that someone who doesn't look like the person that they're banking with, they're not comfortable going to them. So if I was, if I was black and I had to go into a branch with all white employees, I'm probably not going to be comfortable, even if they're welcoming. So when we drive away other communities of color from living within the village by having such a lack of diversity within the village, we suffer for it because we say we want to bring people in, but we don't actually take steps to do it. And that's what I would change is this inaction. We spent a lot of time talking about diversity, equity and inclusion, but we don't actually enact any policies that benefit them. Heck, we even have trouble passing resolutions to recognize Pride or Black History Month. I mean, this is, this is what needs to change is that, that lack of action on diversity, equity and inclusion because it flows to so many other issues that we've already talked about tonight.
Um, and so Gary, I believe that you are the first person to answer the next question. Am I right, everybody? So, and this, this question is very specific, unlike the others. And this is, what's more important, building new homes and commercial space? Or rehabbing, expanding and better utilizing existing homes and storefronts?
Well, I, you know, I think we've been a, a village of growth for the last twenty, probably twenty-five years. You know, everybody has concerned about, you know, we want to save our farmland, uh, we, we need you know, denser housing. And I think some of the things that we look at in, in zoning policies, they talk about you know, people say, and it is, it's expensive to live in Wanake. Part of that is driven by the land price. You know, there, there aren't too many things you can take out of the equation. The land price is a land price. And unless you have some way or means to buy that price down, it's gonna make affordability a little tougher. Things you can do to change that is uh increased density. You know, you can see what we're doing with the Heritage Hills prob, or project out in Veridian. You've gone to denser, uh, you know, denser lots. I think in the, in the community, the downtown area, we could look at infill projects with denser housing that might be able to, to fit in there and rehab some of the downtown area. So I think we have an opportunity in, in that downtown area that uh maybe there's programs that we could offer, you know, Phil talked about like a revolving loan account. Some way to, uh, if people want to update their houses, houses, have a fund available. And in some areas of downtown, maybe there's a way that we can with some denser housing, you know, creates opportunities down, downtown to improve the downtown area. So.
Um, I'm gonna go to Robert next. And then kind of go back to Phil. I asked Phil the first question, so on this one, he's gonna be the last person to answer, if that makes sense to anyone. So Robert, let's have you um answer this one. Um, do you need me to read it again? It's kind of complicated.
No, no, I, I, I understood the question. I just, I was caught off guard by being next, so uh, that's, that's fine. Uh, so yes, um, I, I'm gonna start with uh a, a, a quick note. We shouldn't be looking at greenfield, what, what's known as greenfield development, when you take those fields and develop them uh as the first choice, because quite frankly, I think our neighbors are starting to get tired of us annexing their land so that we can do greenfield development. Uh, we know that is recently as the last election, uh, the town supervisors in Springfield, for example, one of them ran on a platform of we need to make sure Wanake stays in check and that they're not constantly annexing land into our area for greenfield development. Uh, infill is great. And infill is something that I support doing urban infill because we have areas within the village that could be uh rehabilitated that could be converted from single-family into duplexes if the owner wished to do that. I'm not saying that I would uh do government overreach, do anything like crazy like eminent domain to, to take a single-family house and turn it into more dense housing. But there's a problem with everything I'm presenting here, which is our zoning ordinances are notoriously unfriendly for doing some of these things. That's why the CDA, the Community Development Authority, is looking at uh items like accessory dwelling units uh that could go on to the lots of single-family homes. Uh, you know, our, our, Joe hit on it earlier, but I, I will repeat it. You know, our, Joe hit on it earlier, but I will repeat it for him. The zoning, you know, ordinances need to be looked at because they're older and they're, they're built for a time when America was crazy about the suburbs. And now we've discovered there are some problems and limitations to that, especially when you have limited amounts of land. So we really need to look at urban infill just as a choice. Now, I would caution about talking about messing with some of that housing in the downtown area in Main Street. The last time that happened, we ended up in a vicious lawsuit with a developer over building apartment house, apartment complex on some housing that is down there. Now, I'm, obviously that's all said and done, but we really need to be careful when we talk about where we're doing rehab because there's obviously certain parts of the village that have a certain charm that do not lend themselves to putting in more denser housing. But we do have some areas that definitely, if the owners wish to do it, we should make the zoning a little bit easier for them to be able to put in things like duplexes, triplexes, or even dare I say fourplexes, because they can get a lot more value out of that land, house a lot more people, increase the tax base. And it's not greenfield development. It's much cheaper to do it that way.
Angie, I'm going to go to you next.
Thank you. So I was thinking about the question and you said is, what's more important, building new homes and businesses, you said? Or rehabbing what we already have? And then I was thinking, well, what kind of homes are we talking about? Are we talking about those huge single homes that are like mansions to me? That I feel like, oh gosh, I don't need a house that big. You know, six bedrooms, three bathrooms or whatever. I need just a single home where I can have, you know, my kids have each one their own room and live there. I don't care if it's brand new or rehabilitated. That's, that's what I want. And I think that if we can somehow either by rehabbing what we already have or looking at where we can build some neighborhoods where, you know, the average family can live, I think that's what I would go to. And as far as the businesses, I know some businesses are moving here and are growing and they have a lot of customers, you know, all over the world and that. And we have some businesses that come from all over the world to land here for their factories. And then I see, okay, so they, they are going to hire a lot of people and where, where are all these people coming from? You know, they're not living in those half a million mansions. So we need to, to also think about that when we're, we're talking about deciding to build new homes, to rehab and make houses more affordable. Thank you.
So we're done with the questions that we, that Ellen and I came up with. So now.
I don't think so. I think Phil and I have to answer yet.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. You're right. I'm a terrible moderator. Fire me now.
Thanks, Joe. I was feeling bad. I thought I, I thought I'd forgot what I said.
I was kind of wondering the same thing for a moment. I'm like, I don't think I answered that.
So it's up to you. And then we go to Phil and then we're, I guess I'm rushing us through this.
That's okay. You know, I, it'll seem a little bit like I'm just not going to answer the question and to some extent, I guess you could say that, but I, I don't think we have to choose between building new or rehabbing. You know, I think those are both valid options. Given the right circumstances, the right location, the right, you know, potentially the right neighbors or, you know, whatever it might happen to be. Really, I think what we need to go back and look at is some of those zoning issues that we've got. Another thing that we really need to look at, you know, if we've looked at our comprehensive plan, I think the last time we updated that was about 2017 or so. You know, it doesn't seem like five years is all that much, but man, an awful lot happens in five years. So, you know, it may not be a bad idea to go back and look at those, those plans again and say, hey, you know, this area we think is good for redevelopment. You know, five years ago, it wasn't on our radar, but now it is. So I think those, that would be a real useful thing to have and probably a real good place to start. Since at least currently, most of our zoning seems to follow that document as well.
Okay. And last but not least, to answer this question, Phil.
Thank you very much. Boy, this is a real tough question. Both are important. I have to say that these mansion type homes, not mine, by the way, that was not of our choosing. I remember back when we opened up this Arboretum Village housing unit, smaller lots and people who were moving to Wana Key bought these lots and they custom built as big as houses they could on the lots. These are not spec homes. We didn't build big houses and invite people to move into town. People wanted to move to town. They built a house and then they moved here. So we didn't push that issue, but going back to whether we do that or rehab or if we push the issue, I think our first real effort towards getting some smaller homes is going to be the Veridian option. And then over by, behind Octopi, where we have another subdivision going smaller lots, smaller homes, smaller condos, more reasonably priced, so people can have a starter home. We should look at rehabbing some places. We tried very hard to rehab what's referred to as the boxcar apartments a year or so ago. And the problem with it is we had so many landlords, almost all of them were from out of town. They had bought these just as investment properties. They were cash flowing so good that we couldn't get them to sell them reasonably enough to where we could put in some affordable housing and denser housing. So it's a real tough thing to solve, but I think if we work on it long enough, maybe we'll take that first step or maybe even two steps and get something going. And like I say, brilliant is the first step in that way, I think. And the second step is over behind Octopi. Thank you.
Everyone did get a chance to answer that question, correct? Before I move on. I'm not seeing anyone saying no, so I'm gonna. So I'm going to then start with having each of you think of a question for each other. And you can do your round, Rob, and I can step away. And these answers are one minute and it would be nice if you answered your own question as well. So I think I've started with each of you going first once. I'm going to go back to Phil for this one to ask of his fellow candidates and then answer himself.
Wow. Like to have had a day or so to think about this. But why should you vote for me? I guess is the question. I care really deeply for people. I always work very hard to lead people to get along, lead people to succeed, get people involved that are reticent to be involved. So I don't just like to talk about what I do. I like to get out there and, and lead and do things. Like I mentioned, when we wanted to have a good neighborhood connection, well, we just rounded up some people and got the job done. It wasn't fantastic, but okay, tell me what you did. Why should I vote for you if that's why I should feel you should vote for me? That's it. Thank you.
Who do you want to answer first, Phil?
Anybody but Gary. No. Joe, you can do it. You. Thank you.
All right. So we're answering why it is the people should vote for Phil. Is that the question here?
I think he wants you to ask why people should vote for you.
No, it's, it's all good. Well, I would say, you know, aside from Gary and Phil, I'm the only candidate that actually has experience holding public office in Wana Key. Was on the board in 2018 through 2020. Got some very good stuff done during that time. Personally managed to avoid most of the T-Wall lawsuits. I guess that was a good thing. In addition to that, you know, I, I know how our local government works. I can engage on, on day one. I've got, like I said, history of avoiding lawsuits. I'm analytical, I'm logical. And I have an appreciation for the law and being I guess on the edge of it without overstepping the bounds. I'll leave it at that.
And Phil, who do you want to answer next?
You know, I don't want to pick on people. I'd let them hold up their hands.
Robert, let's, let's have you answer.
Sure. So I, I'll start by reiterating, you know, I, I'm definitely, you know, trustworthy with the public's trust. That's why I am endorsed by Dane Dems. That's why I am endorsed by South Central Federation of Labor, AFL-CIO. That's why I am endorsed by the, by Dave Betcher, who's the president of the Wana Key Community School District and Mike Brandt, who's the vice president of Wana Key Community School District. I am very aware of the issues. I, I speak at, at many of these village board meetings. The incumbents can tell you sometimes it's, they don't like hearing from me out there, but I bring a different diversity of opinion to the village board. And I would be one of those important voices that brings, you know, a different opinion. That doesn't mean that I'm there just to vote against everything that happens. Not, not at all. I want the village to succeed. I want things to go forward. But I'm willing to do the work to write the resolutions, to work with residents who feel underrepresented, who are afraid to talk to the village board. Not everybody wants to call Chris Lerner to get something done. Sometimes they just want to talk to a trustee or somebody who is more like them that, you know, is, has, you know, is more approachable. I'll be available way more than some of the other village trustees. I, you know, I will respond to emails and I will make myself available even on the dreaded social media platforms that the village likes to avoid. I will, I will be out there. I'll be listening. I'll be taking notes. And I would definitely be deserving of your vote if that's what you'd like to see in a trustee.
I'm going to go to Gary.
Yeah, I think again, my experience is probably the strength that I have in the community. Serving on the planning commissions, the joint plan, the finance committee, the public works and parks. The experience that I bring to the board, especially with some of the changes that we're going to have internally at the village with some people retiring and experience is pretty important. I think, again, I lead by example in the village. People who know me support me because they understand that I get things done. I look out for everyone's best interest. I want to make, you know, Wana Key as successful as possible and, you know, that's why I want to continue to stay on the board. Thanks.
Angie, last but not least.
Thank you. So you should vote for me because I will bring a new perspective to the board that honestly, none of the other candidates can bring because of their background. I am a person of color. I'm a woman, I'm a working mom. I am going to be there to represent everybody who quite firmly are not being represented right now. So we need that because we as a village have a lot of work to do about diversity, equity and inclusion. I know there's a lot of talk about it, but some people talk about diversity, equity and inclusion, and they don't even know what they're talking about. So let's bring my voice to the table because I, I am that person. And I also have experience on boards and, and different committees here in the United States and also in Columbia where I'm from. Thank you.
Okay. I am going to ask Joe to think of a question to ask everybody else and you choose your order that you want to ask. And if you don't want to do that, you can have me do that, whichever way.
Can I, can I ask a question and answer it last?
Yes.
Excellent. So the question that I would throw out there, there's been a lot of discussion around communicating with the constituents, however that may happen. One of the ways that there seems to be a lot of interest in is social media. How do you propose promoting communication via social media while still avoiding the concept of a walking quorum? If you need any definitions, I can assist with that.
Who starts? Who do you want to ask?
Let's, let's start with Gary.
Yeah, social media, you know, we have a policy at the village and I know they want to even rework that policy at the village about social media. I'm not a guy that is on social media. I hear a lot about it in the community. It seems like it's become the thing that tears this community apart more than has ever brought it together. I'm sure it has its place. I think it's a good way to communicate. But it needs to be in a positive way. So that's my comments on social media.
About Angie next.
Thanks, Joe, for the question because I think that, you know, the world and technology, things are evolving. And we as a village, we cannot get stuck on like, everybody needs to call an office and leave a voice message. I mean, some people nowadays, we don't even check voicemails anymore. Email, then you have several emails. There's like email for the village, your personal email, your work email. And do you really check all of them all the time? And we are representing everybody. And we want to be able to communicate with everybody, younger people. So we need to be out there revising our policy. Make sure we have access to Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, TikTok, everything where people can approach us and so we can bring their voice to the board and to our discussions. We need to evolve and get up to date.
Thank you. Let's go with Robert next.
So yeah, obviously step one would be revise the social media policy of the village, which multiple people will brought up and we would need to do that, to do that. There are multiple ways we can go about this. One, individual trustees, there's nothing that stops them from having their own Facebook page. The constituents could reach out to them, just like it would be for a Dane County supervisor, for our Assembly District Representatives at the State House, all these things, you know, these are possibilities. I think when people talk about they hear negative things about social media, they're going to talk about our favorite community page, Wana Key Can We Talk? Which has brought some controversy in the past, but it's also united a lot of people within the village who otherwise wouldn't talk to each other. If there's one thing we learned in this pandemic, it's that social media is actually probably the best way that some of us could stay connected when we were forced to separate and be apart. And there's no reason that, that the village government couldn't evolve to that level where they could work with the constituents. And as for walking quorums, Joe, since you asked that question, I know that's a really wonky question and I really appreciate it. There are ways around that, either by you would just, you just have a policy, you don't discuss village business. You just say, okay, thank you. I heard you. And you move on from that. And then you can also have clear delineations between an official government account and your personal account in which you're not discussing government business. So.
Thank you. And Phil?
I've had a policy to not, not vote before the meeting. And I'm, I still am not going to vote before the meeting on social media. I, I'm just appalled at some of the things people do on social media and the way they conduct themselves. I, I, I know it's, what its use is, I know how good it could be. I know how bad it can be. I've had some very hurtful things done to me on it. They, people think it's the right thing to do. I don't think it is. I think they say things on there that they wouldn't say on purpose, if they were talking to you. I just am not a fan of what is done on it. Sorry.
Fair answer, Phil. So I guess my answer on this one, I'll echo a little bit of what several people have said. I think we have to update the policy that the village has. I think what Robert talked about, having individual pages, I think that's a great approach to being able to do that. The one thing that I think we are currently missing, and actually it was brought up on Monday in the restructuring, is having a communications person for the village so that that, you know, they can sort of be that, that centerpiece. And I'd like to see them be able to go forward with that. So yeah, it's, it's. So, yeah, it's, it's definitely not something that we can, you know, solve the moments that we take office or anything, but certainly something that we're going to want to look at because social media is not going away.
I'm going to ask Robert to ask the next question of all the candidates and answer it himself.
And I, I will, I, I think I like Joe's idea. I'm going to answer my own question last. Sorry, Joe, I'm stealing your idea. And Roberto, I'll actually leave this to you for, for doing the round robin portion because I, I don't want to be, I don't want anybody to have a perception on this question.
Are you as bad at it as me? Will you be, would you be as bad at it, at it, at the round robin as I have been?
Probably. There's a good chance I would forget to ask too many questions. I don't want to, I don't want to forget anybody here. Joe's gotten picked on enough tonight about getting missed in the questions. So, okay. So like it or not, Wannakee is, has gotten a very bad reputation in the rest of the county for being exclusive, inaccessible, and at times we can be seen as outright bigoted and racist. We had an incident where the biggest land developer in our village had signs promoting a xenophobic, anti-Semitic, anti-LGBTQ person on his property. I was attacked in an anonymous letter. A school board member was attacked. A school board candidate was attacked because of this color of his skin. This happened during a time of, of our incumbents that are currently in this, in here on the village board, and also at a time when someone who's running was on the village board. So what have you done to make Wannakee a more inclusive and enlightened community? And what will you pledge to do to help our community to be open to everyone? Roberto, I'll leave that to you.
Okay, I am going to start with Gary.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear some of the incidences have happened in Wannakee with the teenagers and, and some of the yelling, but I don't feel, you know, that, you know, I don't feel that the race issue is as big as people make it. It seems like we've, we've tried to create an issue. I don't see it in, with the people that I know, the people that I associate with. I know people throughout the whole village, you know. I try to lead again by example, the things that I've done in the community to help the Wannakee Neighborhood Connection. As Phil said, you know, I took six months out of my life, six days a week, building the Wannakee Neighborhood Connection. You know, a few months back, I delivered furniture, picked up furniture and delivered furniture to needy families in the village. I've gone through diversity training most of my professional life with the corporations I worked for. We've gone through it at the village board. We've shared stories with our village board members of experiences that we've had. And I think some of them are very touched by some of the experiences I've had as a youth coach.
Okay, I'm going to go to Joe and then Angie, and then I don't see Phil, but we'll do Joe and then Angie. So, Phil?
Okay. You know, I, I guess if I had to, if I had to focus on one thing, you know, I would love to see us work with our schools, particularly the high school. Because, you know, so much of the, you know, what makes a person is formed in those younger years and up through the high school. And I think we really need to, you know, help educate our kids as to why diversity is a good thing, you know. What are the struggles that have gone on? What can we do to help? I would love to see more, you know, foreign languages and things that are brought into that as well. The more we can talk, be it English, Spanish, you know, French, whatever it might be, the better off we're going to be. So I really think we need to focus on, you know, improving the diversity in our schools and the knowledge about it.
Thanks for the question, Robert. So what have I done? I am not part of one of the, I'm not one of the incumbents. I haven't been on the board, but I'm still a community member who's very active on the diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. I first questioned our diversity, equity, and inclusion survey that was sent out village-wide on why is it not sent out in Spanish? We're talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion. And, you know, some people say, oh, I've done some training and, you know, I've learned some things. I, I know some people, but it, you don't think like them yet. And that's what you have to do. You have to be on their shoes. I speak English. I don't need the survey in Spanish or another language, but I, I live those, I, I walk those shoes. And I feel welcome here. I don't feel unwelcome. That's one of the things I say when I say I love Wannakee. I feel this is my community, but I know some people don't feel welcome. And that's what I, I've done. I've raised a voice and I've said, you know, we need to do things and do them faster and in a better, more deeper, in a deeper way. Is my time up?
Yes.
I have so much to say.
And so, does Phil lead the meeting or can you see Ellen?
Yeah, he's not, he is not on currently. Hopefully, everything's okay. Well, hopefully he'll get back on, but he is not on right now.
I'll, I'll just go ahead and answer, Roberto, then. Are you ready, Ellen, for me? Okay, so to answer my own question, you know, I've, I've worked with, with groups to help raise awareness of, you know, the issues that, that different groups that, let's be frank, that, that are not white, that are not upper class, are facing within the village. You know, I, I worked with, behind the scenes with the school districts so that we could get pride recognized last June. I have been very supportive of the efforts to raise awareness about, you know, those that have lower income within the village and how it's tough for them to live within the village. I, I agree with Angie that that community survey, I asked the same question too, you know, why, why is this not in Spanish if we're trying to find out about it? And honestly, the results from that survey were quite telling and it confirmed kind of why I asked the question, which is that there is this great perception that we are overly white, overly Christian, overly friendly towards males. And we, if the community perceives it that way, I mean, this is a community telling us this isn't just, I heard my neighbor say it. We really need to listen to that. And my pledge is that, you know, even on day one, we will work towards passing resolutions to recognize Black History Month, recognize Latin history, and to recognize pride. I mean, these are small steps, but it shows that at least we're willing to make a change and, and take steps forward because then we're going to tackle the tough issues like zoning and affordable housing and things like that that prevent the village from really growing in a DEI perspective. And yes, like Angie, I could probably talk forever on this, so I'm just going to stop there.
Angie, you, you get to ask the next question of your fellow candidates. And you can do the round robin if you want, or you can make me do it. It's up to you.
Okay, so my question is, you know, I hear a lot of, I get the job done. And, but I also hear a lot of, you know, things, you know, I feel fine. I don't, I don't see this is really happening. You know, it's just kind of being made up. So we do have some survey results from the diversity, equity, and inclusion from our own village. We know we don't have a very good reputation around the county as being a diverse community who's equitable and inclusive. So my question to you, and maybe I'll repeat a little bit for Phil. Phil, can you hear me?
I can. I was, I froze up for some reason and I had to actually reboot my computer to get back in. So I missed answering Robert's question and I just caught the tail end of yours. So I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. So if you want to answer Robert's question, then I can ask my question right after. I would love to hear your answer.
Thank you. I don't think Wannakee gets bad press from the other communities around town. I have friends all around the area and mostly they're envious of how well things run here. And I, I just, I'm sorry, I, I, I don't find that Wannakee has a bad record around the county. That's my answer. Now your question, ma'am.
So I, like I was saying, you know, I hear a lot of, you know, we get the job done, we get things done. And the other theme I hear too is, you know, things are not happening here. We don't have a bad reputation. Things are being made up, but we do have some data from the diversity, equity, and inclusion survey that was done in the village. So this isn't just like our own experience. This is what we hear objectively from people answering the survey. And we've hear what other communities around the area say about Wannakee, like Whiteaki, or, you know, they have a very good school district, but my kid is African-American and they're going to be bullied and they're going to suffer from racism in school, for example. So going back to that, I get the job done. How are you going to get the job done about making Wannakee a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive community where everyone feels welcome? And I want specific steps and remember, you only have a minute to answer. Thank you.
Well, I'm not going to get the job done. I'm not going to get the job done. I can't from step at a time. I'm sorry, somebody still talking? I didn't, I'm sorry, I'll go back.
You froze for a bit.
Yeah. Yeah, nobody has answered that question, Phil. I was just making the, the question, asking the question now for people to start answering. So since you answered the last one, last, I guess it should be somebody else's turn. Yeah, I think Roberta can go around the room.
I'll go around the room. I'm going to ask Gary. I'm going to go Gary, Joe, Robert, and Phil. That sound okay with everybody? Okay, so Gary?
Yeah, I think, you know, personally, I may need to, I, I tried to think through this a little bit, going back to even Joe's point about going to the schools. You know, the schools, you know, maybe they see that kind of interaction or, you know, maybe I'm missing a population that I don't know in the community that, you know, don't feel like they're included. And so I need to reach out to the schools and say, hey, can I come in and talk to people? Maybe it's Wannakee Neighborhood Connection. You know, I used to be very involved there. Maybe I need to get back involved more at the Neighborhood Connection and, and, and talk with people who live here and don't feel included because nobody wants that. They shouldn't have to feel that way. But I need to go find the people that don't feel that way today so I can understand their situation. Okay?
So I think I said Joe next, and then Robert, and then Phil?
I'll give you a huge credit. This is certainly not an easy question to answer, nor is it an easy topic to, to solve. You know, I don't think we can legislate anything that is going to solve these things. I don't think we can, you know, force people to be a certain way. That's not going to solve anything. I think what it really comes down to, and this is similar to my last answer, is education. And certainly if we can get into the high school and we can educate in that realm, that's a good thing. If we can bring that up to the families and the parents as well, maybe through village center projects or, you know, you know, events, whatever it may be, I think that'll go a long way towards at least helping people understand, you know, why, what are the problems that we do have here? And getting more brains involved with, you know, how can we fix those?
So I think that it really starts from the top. I think that people look at the trustees as the village leaders, and rightfully so. I mean, they're elected by the, the citizens of the village to lead the village, and the tone really comes from the top. So that means that you're starting off, when you have instances, you know, that happen, even if they're nationally, you start by strongly condemning, you know, that type of hate, that type of mentality. You make sure that people in the village know that you are welcome here and your leadership is going to make sure that you feel welcome here, even because words matter. And then you follow it up with the policies. And when I talk about policies, I don't mean, you know, we, yes, there are a lot of committees that can be formed, but you have to actually take action off of those committees. And we need to be better about that. And we need to be held accountable to that as, as the leaders of the village. And so it's very important that we do that. And finally, you have to reach out to those communities and work with them, whether it's, you know, and, and they're not going to be in Wannakee. I mean, if I want to work with Hispanic community, I would probably start with like Central Hispano down in, in Madison rather than starting in Wannakee area. So they could tell me who in Wannakee would be best to work with. You know, I would work with Justified Anger. There are different groups that we need to reach out with, that we need to think beyond the box, beyond Wannakee, if we're going to really address this issue because they need to have those voices, not, not the white guy. I don't need to be that voice.
And Phil, you're the last one to talk, I believe, right, on this question?
Well, it's, like I said, it's kind of impossible for me to solve it. It's, it's more of a job of us solving. From my standpoint, I guess I could start with going across the yard and talking to my friend, Robert, who just moved here. He's a Hispanic male. His children and his wife are Hispanic. I've got to try to help him find a job because he wants to live in Wannakee. I guess I'll have to ask him the questions of, how are your children being treated in school, Robert? What can I do to solve this? Who can I go to? That's as a citizen and as a neighbor. As a village person, yes, we have to take a stand. We have to, if we hear about a thing like that appalling thing where the boys were driving around in their car yelling words, yes, we've got to meet this head on and condemn it. And condemning it isn't enough. Somehow or other, action's got to be taken to stop it. Thank you.
Okay, Gary, I think you're the person to ask the last question of for tonight, if I'm not mistaken. And if I am, please, somebody tell me.
I haven't answered my question.
Oh, you haven't?
No. I wanted to let everybody go to copy Joe's idea of answering last. So I, I, do I have a minute?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted to say that we have to listen to the people who are being affected or who are part of that group that's not being included, kind of what Gary was saying. Because it's hard to, to listen when you're not really seeking. And even when you seek, you, you might not get answers that are truthful because people are afraid to talk. People are not going to tell you all their problems or their feelings because they don't feel comfortable because you're, you're not similar to them. So that's not enough. So what I would do is I want to hear from a specific groups, see where we can make some changes on a village level. I know we talk about the school. That's important, especially in the elementary years because it's already some learning that can be done there. And then, so we don't have the problems that we have later in high school. We have to start early. But as a village, we would have to look at listening to everybody. Thanks.
Everybody, everybody answered now, right? Good. Sorry, Angie.
No problem.
So Gary, you are the, the person who asked the last question. I don't know if you want to answer it first or last.
I'll answer it first. You know, when, when you get to be a village trustee, you also get to be a member of three or four other committees within the village. And I'm just wondering, you know, what committees would you like to be part of? You know, what strengths do you think you bring to those committees? I'd just be curious to see what, what, what your other interests are in the village. You know, personally, I've been on most committees. I really enjoy parks and public works, but the, the Police and Fire Commission would be an interesting one to be on for me because that's one I've not been involved with. And again, we've got some challenges coming in the future on that committee. And I'd like to be part of that discussion. So I guess we'll go to, how about Joe next?
Well, that's a pretty good question. You know, there's, there's quite a few. I've been, I've been on the Board of Review when I wasn't a trustee, been on the Plan Commission, was the Chair of the, was it the Police Committee, Police Commission? I can never remember which ones which. The one that looks at. The one that looks at serving licenses and that sort of thing. You know, if I could pick anything at all, I would actually probably say utilities. I have a lot of, a lot of interest there and there's a lot of technology that goes into that with such a high level of interest in technology. I think that would be a great match for me.
All right, great. Hey, Robert, you're next.
All right. So, yeah, I would, you know, being a banker, finance committee is always interesting to me. And, you know, probably think that I work a lot in oversight. I'm a risk management person. That's what I do at my bank. So I would definitely be interested in the police committee. Police commission is the one that's the citizen-led one. So police committee would be the one that's, that's us. And then I definitely have interest in public works as well as the plan commission as well, just because of the fact that I am detail-oriented. I do care a lot about zoning, probably a little too much. And I think that's, that's a natural fit. I would note, as somebody who's not been on the village board, who has applied as a citizen for these committees, that it can be difficult to get on there. I, I believe Chris is the one who selects it and I've, I've applied to multiple committees and I have never heard back from the village. So I think that, you know, as a part of to kind of warp the question a little bit, I think we also need to look at citizen involvement and maybe allowing more diverse voices on there. And not just the people that the elected officials are comfortable with being on there because we definitely need those diverse citizen voices as well.
All right. Thanks, Robert. Angie?
Thank you. So I think that with my experience, I would work well in the finance committee because I already looked at budgets and the finances of organizations. I've taken accounting classes, taken after my dad, he's an accountant. So I would like to be there in the finance committee and kind of look at all of that information. I like, I also like the parks and infrastructure and the, the police and fire. Does the police and fire include the EMS? No?
Okay, that's a separate committee. Phil's.
Okay, I would be interested in the EMS committee because I do have some medical background.
Great, thanks. Phil? You're muted.
There we go. Cable TV. I want to be on cable TV. They don't do anything. Everybody jokes about that because the rookie always gets on cable TV. There's nothing to talk about. Angie, one of the situations on fire, which is separate and EMS, which are separate, those are districts. And when you're on that committee, you're on with people.
He froze again.
I haven't been.
From all the other communities that we serve. So I've served on both those. My favorites are parks and public public works, planning and or I've never served on finance. Although I do service treasurer for, you know, a lot of the organizations I'm in and for some of my businesses, but I just have enough finance. I got, got a little tired of it. I, I find it more exciting to plan the things that the public gets to enjoy, like Public Works, Streets and Parks, senior services. So that's what I would like. Thank you.
Those are really good questions. I like this last feature very much. So thank you. That's all we have for tonight. I want to thank everybody for taking the time. It was really, I thought it was an interesting session. Thank you, Robert. Yes?
Do we get closing remarks?
We hadn't planned that.
Well, this isn't a closing remark, but I just want to make sure that people know that when you upload this video to YouTube, you can turn on closed captioning automatic and you can have those captions automatically translated to other languages. Because I know this whole meeting was in English, so if people don't speak English, they can turn those on. So I just wanted to say that really quick, if we can add that to the communication, that would be great because I couldn't, I mean, we wouldn't have an interpreter here and we couldn't have all this in, in Spanish or other languages. So I just wanted to see if you could please do that because we have some citizens and voters who don't speak English. Thank you.
Angie, thank you so much for, for mentioning that. I took a note of that and we'll definitely do that. And if I have a problem, I will call you. Because it sounds like you know how that works. But yes, I will definitely do that. So thank you for mentioning that.
They're not like 100% accurate, but at least people will get the main idea.
Ellen, Roberto, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Yep. Thank you, everyone.
Yep, bye bye.
All right.
You, bye.
Take care.
Take care. You too. Thank you for doing this. Bye bye.
One thing that I'll mention before signing off from the village trustee candidate forum for everybody watching is that we will do a school board candidate forum on Thursday, March 31st. And we will also be sharing that recording for the community to view. This is Ellen from the Wanakee Chamber of Commerce and Roberta from the Wanakee Tribune. We want to thank you for your time. Good night.